I'll call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Mayor Ford?
Here.
Mayor Prochem Teeter?
Here.
Councilmember Madera?
Present.
Councilmember Diaz?
Here.
Councilmember Douglas?
Present.
Councilmember Hughesman?
Present.
Councilmember Elliott?
Present.
Councilman Correola?
Present.
Councilmember Frank? Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, we're all here except for Councilmember Frank. I'm open for a motion to allow for an excuse since she's out of town.
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
I make a motion to excuse Councilman Frank.
Thank you, Mr. Hughesman.
Second.
I have a motion to second for that excused absence. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Next item on the agenda because we know we still have some folks that are intent to be here to pick up their checks. We have an executive session that should be next in order on our agenda. It's not in that order. So I'm going to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to put the executive session next in order and with the Quality Community Foundation recognition after the executive session. Is there a motion to do so, Mr. Hughesman?
So moved.
Mr. Teeter?
Second.
My motion is second to amend the agenda as mentioned. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. And then now the item before us is the executive session. It's to enter into executive session pursuant to CRS 24-6-402, Parents Four, Parents B, for the purpose of receiving legal advice relative to pending litigation, Lead Home versus Commerce City. All right, Mr. Teeter?
So approved. Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you. I need a second. Mr. Douglas?
Second.
I have a motion to second to go into executive session for the reasons stated. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. I'd ask the audience to please bear with us. This is estimated to take around 15 minutes. So it's not going to be a long executive session. It'll give some of the other folks a chance to get here to pick up their checks and then as soon as we're done, we'll get to giving out checks. So thank you for your patience and we'll be back in just a few minutes. We're back out of our executive session. Calling the meeting back to order. Looks like we have some more folks that joined us for the check giveaway tonight. I do have the QCF item is next on the agenda. However, before we go any further in this meeting, I want to have everybody stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please. Thank you all. One quick announcement for viewers at home that are trying to view on Channel Eight. We currently get our Channel Eight feed from the administrative offices of School District 14. That feed is not working and we are currently in the process of trying to separate that feed. School District 14 will have their own channel. We'll have our own channel. And so tonight, I don't believe it will be back up for tonight. So if you're at home and you're wanting to view the council meeting live on Channel Eight, you will be unable to do so. However, you are able to go to the city's website and view it online. And I'm sorry for the inconvenience and we hope to have that technical problem taken care of before the next council meeting. So thank you for that. All right, now, check giveaway. I'd like to invite the QCF President Jennifer Prather forward to present the grant awards. I'd like to invite the council forward to join her and the award recipients for a photo. So the way I'd like to see this work is as she calls everybody up to get their check. Please get your check, come up here on the podium. After all the checks are handed out, we'll come down and take some pictures. Jennifer, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I am Jennifer Prather and I've been on the QCF board for, this is starting my second year, and I have the pleasure of serving as the president of the board this year. I would like to recognize three other board members who are here. Brendan Binns, Billy Gurr, and Cheryl Carstens. They're in the back of the room. And I would like to recognize our grantees from this cycle. We had a very competitive grant cycle and we're proud of the work that our grantees can do and the services that they provide to our community and are very grateful for council support to make that possible. I'm going to call names. I don't know that we have everyone here, so I'm just going to keep calling names and then as you invited, we'll come up and take a photo.
Great. Thank you.
Adams County Youth Initiative. Adelante Community Development. Almost Home. Audio Information Network. Adams County Emergency Food Bank. Brothers Redevelopment. Junior Achievement. Mercy Housing Mountain Plains. Project Angel Heart. The Senior Hub. Access Housing of Adams County. Adams 14 After School Program. Adams 14 Education Foundation. CASA of Adams and Broomfield Counties. Catholic Charities. Commerce City Cultural Council. Commerce City Historical Society. Community Uplift Partnership. Environmental Learning for Kids. Fish of Commerce City. Food Bank of the Rockies. Inspire. Joyful Journeys Community Enrichment. Kids First Healthcare. Ralston House. St. Anthony North. And they are our final grantee. Thank you all.
Great, thank you.
And I'd just like to make one adjustment if council approve. We thought it would be a little less disruptive. We actually handed the checks out in the lobby afterwards.
That's fine.
Okay, thanks.
All right, council, come on down front, please.
Did you know about this Channel Eight thing?
Audience introduction when they're all here.
I know. Yeah, I know. I just missed one.
The system works.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you to all the recipients of our grant program. And I want to thank the organization, the Board of the QCF. Several members were here tonight. I just want to thank them for continuing to put forth the effort to identify where the needs need to go within our community and bringing forward those recommendations for that grant money. Next item on the agenda is going to be the audience introduction. And so I'd like to ask the staff if they please pass around a microphone and allow the remaining audience to introduce themselves.
Norma Portnoy.
Charles Wolfersberger.
Greg Sedar.
Yerma Serna.
Thank you all for being here this evening. Next item on our agenda is the citizen communication portion of our agenda. Per council policy, communication is at this time on our agenda for the public to address the council on business of affairs of the city. City council is not able to hear comments on land use matters that are before or may come before city council. Please reserve such comments for the appropriate public hearing. Please give your name and address for the record and keep your comments limited to three minutes. Thank you. I'll start off by calling Norma Portnoy. Good evening, and just state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Norma Portnoy, forty-six seventy-five East Sixty, Ninth Avenue.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for this time. Just to tell you about something special that's coming up. In, since 2014, you guys have sponsored a table at our annual benefit roast. The first year was when we roasted Sean Ford. I think some of you were there. So you guys have been very gracious, and you bought a silver sponsorship ever since. So I wanted to let you know that this year we're foregoing the benefit roast because we got something incredibly special. I don't know if you've heard of it. It's called the Biz Bash. CoBiz Financial runs a huge fundraiser once a year. It's a huge concert. This year it's the Beach Boys, Brian Wilson and L. Jardine from the Beach Boys. And each year they choose two child-serving nonprofits. So we were selected from among eighty applicants, and so we got it, which is huge. Sometimes it takes eight times in a row before you get it, and this was only our third time applying. Anyways, I just wanted to let you know about it, and I'll leave these. It's at the Fillmore. It's on Thursday, April nineteenth. It's not inexpensive. It's three hundred dollars a ticket, which is how they raise so much money to give to the nonprofits. So it benefits Commerce City children, and if you care, and then this is a sponsorship packet. So the tables are expensive, the tickets are expensive, but if the council, if the council's interested in it as a council or individuals, then we would just love to have you participate. So it's just an invitation.
You can hand that stuff to the city attorney right there, and he can make sure to get that information to the council. I would, I would like to point out to the council that every year we have been supportive of Kids First Healthcare. They're the organization that's in our school system that's, takes care of a lot of the kids in this community. And we have sponsored that roast on a regular basis. And since you're not going to have that this year, I would be hopeful that the council would help sponsor at least at the same dollar value that we've been doing for the roast, if not to add a little bit extra for this year because you're doing the, the ba, big event. But I'll leave that up to the council to make a motion and recommendation to make sure that that money that's already budgeted for the roast that's not happening be directed towards this new event, and if they wanted to add any additional dollars to the Biz Bash. So if there's any council would like to make a motion regarding that topic, now is the time. Do you, Brian?
Norma, maybe you could help me. I think it was fifteen hundred dollars in years past for a, for a table. So I think that's what we have budgeted. We've also, based upon Norma's request, been able to provide some, some other prizes to help with the event.
Yeah, there's a silent auction, and so Buffalo Run is giving Brian and Sean Asta Preferred Players Pass because they make a lot of money during the silent auction during the evening. And the police department's going to do a little policeman for a day, like maybe for a kid's birthday party or something. So they are donating a couple of items for the auction. I really appreciate that. Yeah, absolutely. So, and I don't know if everybody in the, I don't know, I know a lot of you, but I don't know all of you. So we run five pediatric clinics in Commerce City. We have the one across the street from the old high school at Sixty-Ninth and Dexter, and then we're in Adam City High School, Adam City Middle School, Kearney, and Lester Arnold. So these are full-fledged pediatric primary care practices. We're keeping the kids healthy so they can do better in school and so their parents don't have to kind of worry between, do I pay for medical care or put food on the table? We don't want them to have to worry about putting food on the table, so it's very affordable.
Mr. Huesman.
I'd like to make a motion that we support the Kids First Healthcare with a eighteen hundred dollar donation for the purchase of six tickets to their Biz Bash.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried.
Thank you so very much. I really, really appreciate it. This will go for medical care for the kids. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next. Charles Wolfenburger. Wolfenburger, I think I said that right, didn't I? All right. I hate when I screw them up. Need your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Charles Wolfersberger. I'm actually here on behalf of the Riverdale Dunes Metropolitan District, which is the Dunes Park subdivision at Eighty-Five Highway and Hundred-and-Twelfth Avenue. Our, our firm is the, we do the management for that metropolitan district, and we have, actually, we have quite a few districts in Commerce City that we manage. And actually, before I, just want to make a couple of comments on street parking. But before I do so, I just wanted to just give my compliments, actually on behalf of the Board, on several Boards, for the Highway Two widening project, the rec center. I know it's been a while now, but with the King Supers, the market there, I know that took a lot of time to get that in place. So I just, I know a lot of homeowners and Board members in these districts and HOAs are, are happy with the development that they see going along, especially along Hundred and Fourth Avenue and some of those other main streets around there, so.
Thank you.
A lot of compliments go your way. I know you get a lot of complaints, so should offset that with some compliments, too.
Appreciate it.
The, um, we did, our, I would say in the last year and a half, our office has been starting to take a, a large increase in, in calls and complaints from homeowners about street parking. I know I was on the, I was on the town hall conference call a few weeks ago. Noticed there's some, some questions then, concerns then expressed as well. But we have been talking with all of our district boards, and they're looking at trying to find ways to address some of these issues. And I would say kind of the, again, I know I've got limited time, so I'll be very brief. But one of the issues that's affecting the city is just, it's rising home prices. And you just see a lot of people where you have multiple families or groups that are now purchasing homes. And, and when they're buying a home that has a two-car garage and two places in the driveway, you've got people coming in with seven or eight cars, and we have one instance where we know people have ten cars. And, and also with those issues, when, you know, home prices go up, people are trying to find ways to, to combine finances to buy, purchase homes. In my opinion, that's part of the problem here. You see, we're seeing more rental units being turned into multi, multi-rental units, being rented to multiple families. Districts and HOAs really don't have a way to control any of that. When they deal with covenant enforcement, you're dealing with the outside of a house, not the inside. And so that's been a growing concern in the neighborhoods. And so we've been, we've talked with, we've contacted the city attorney's office, city manager's office, and that's something we'd like to continue to pursue is, is to get some. We think we have some good ideas on ways that the districts can self-enforce or work with the city to, to help, to help address some of those issues. And also possibly, if we're, if our office is getting a lot of calls, or I'm sure the, the city police are getting a lot of calls, too, and that's, that's also a concern, too, that the boards are having is, we know we have limited police resources in the city. I think people are very happy with this. I feel people are happy with the service they get from the police. But if we have a way to, you know, also potentially alleviate some of their time through maybe some other ways of self-enforcement in these districts, that would be, you know, I think something definitely worth considering for the city. So that's, that's, that's kind of my comment for tonight, and just wanted to put that out there.
Well, I want to address some of your concerns. You know, I've been on this council for a long time, and this isn't the first time where you've had a good economy create bad situations, and that bad economies create other situations. And we've seen this before where, and it's not just in the newer areas of Commerce City. It's in all of Commerce City, and I would imagine in other cities as well, where families start moving in together, renting out bedrooms, what have you, and pretty soon you have a whole bunch of people living in one house, and there's not enough parking. So they're parking in front of everybody else's houses. To address that, the last time, we did make an ordinance that said that the parking in front of your house is for the owner of that property. Now, it's really tough to enforce. However, you would have to call and complain that someone's parked there and has been parked there for more than four hours. When an officer comes out, they can mark the tires, and if the car hasn't moved within a certain amount of time, then it potentially could be towed. Now, that's my recollection, and I would let the police department or, or the city manager's office add to that or, or correct me on any, anything I've said wrong. Secondly, we also passed an ordinance that only relation, related family members can live within a house. Again, extremely hard for our police department to enforce because when they go to a house and there's twenty people living there, it's hard to tell who's not related to who is related, so it, it's really hard to manage. I do know I have taken on several calls, not lately, but a while back, about parking issues within your, your subdivision, and that there was people that were getting the clamps or whatever put on their wheels. Is that correct?
Oh, right. Yeah, there's, there's a measure of booting.
Right, so, and, and that is a concern as well because if it's on the street, it's our jurisdiction, and we want to make sure that we're, we're doing our job. But it, it is tough, and if there needs to be some parking enforcement, then we need to make sure we have officers go out and do some parking enforcement because the last thing I need is people coming after the city because their car was booted, and we don't have boots, and we don't do boots, and so it turns into a problem. But I would also like to hear you out, at least through the city manager's office with communication, to potentially, some ideas you may have on how to rectify the problem of a lack of parking in front of one's home. I think out of anybody sitting up at this dais, I have been impacted for many, many years. And, and so when I come home from a council meeting and I have to park around the block and walk home, I know there's a parking problem. So it, it, it even touches me on a regular basis. Brian, looks like you have something to say?
Thank you for being here, Mr. Wolfersberger. He did make a formal request on behalf of the Riverdale Dunes neighborhood to Mr. Seasley and I with a rather unique request. It was the ability, the willingness to take on, the association was willing to take on some enforcement themselves of parking restrictions within neighborhood streets. It's interesting because we don't normally have that sort of a request come forward. Usually, it's a, it's a desire to see more enforcement from our police department, but they recognize that our resources are stretched thin, and so I appreciate that they've made the request, trying to think outside the box about how to solve the problem. It has been an interesting question for us to research, both on sort of the public policy side, but also just on the legal side about the ability of a, essentially a private organization to do enforcement within a public street, so.
Liability is what I would be concerned about on the city side as well.
So I, I do apologize, Charles. We owe you a response back, and just quite frankly, we've been wrestling with it, trying to figure out.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
How to, how to answer, because it's such a, we, we can't find any example anywhere else of this happening. So we always like to steal the ideas of other cities who maybe have solved this problem before us. And as far as I know, we haven't been able to find any other situation. So we're trying to figure out, can we, would be the first question. Can we authorize the association to do it? And then if we can, should we? So can would be the legal question. Do we have the legal authority to assign that authority to another entity? And if we can, then it's more of a policy question. Should we? Is this something the city wants to do? Now, the downside is if we're not able to authorize the neighborhood to do this, the responsibility does fall back on our police department, which is a challenge. As you can imagine, parking calls are not a very high priority, and so sometimes it takes our officers some time to get out and investigate those. So that's, that's the dilemma.
All right, I think there's some more discussion here. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. You know, I brought this issue up last year, and at that time, and as it currently sits now, dealing with Airbnb, we have a lot of, I have people reach me out and say, hey, you know, this is going on, a lot of parking and everything, and then there's also people in the neighborhood, poker parties and all that stuff, and, you know, just the way things are stated. So we did have a discussion about that in a study session, and now that things have persisted, you're coming forward, maybe we should bring this back to a study session and look at some options. But since we, you know, the streets are, do belong to Commerce City, it, it does put up upon us, I mean, as far as us being responsible, and I think that we could have some solutions. And I would be up if the council deems to put this on the agenda for a study session.
I'm not opposed to that, Mr. Douglas. I'd like to let the city attorney and city manager make sure they have all the research needs that they, they have, and make sure that we know that we're within bounds legally and liable and everything else. And then at that point in time, I think when they come back with, with some options, that we should hear that in a study session. And at that time, I would hope that Mr. Wolfensberger would be invited to also come to listen to that discussion. So would you like a motion, Brian, to rec, to do that, or you all right?
No, I think council consensus tonight is fine. Again, Mr. Wolfersberger's letter is several weeks old now, and we've just been wrestling with it, is all. So I think that's, that's a good idea, though, particularly if it gets to be the policy question of, does city council wish to extend that authorization to a neighborhood? So that's when it'll be an important council policy discussion.
Is there anyone on council that doesn't view that to be appropriate? So we can make sure we have consensus. Mr. Teeter?
Yes, so thank Charles. I agree with the mayor on this. This needs to be studied a little bit further. But it's not just River Run. It's all over Commerce City, and it's even down here in the south. We've had many complaints from people down here as well, and it's something we need to address and look at down the road and see if we can or can't do anything about it, so, yeah, I'm for the study session.
Well, and, and Mr. Teeter, you bring up a good point, and I want to make a clarifying message here because we have a lot of, our community doesn't have metro districts or HOAs, and, and that, those areas, I wouldn't want them to get less. HOAs, and that, those areas, I wouldn't want them to get less attention for parking than others. So I want to make sure when we do enforce parking issues that we're talking about, we get equal enforcement. And so if we allow a metro district to enforce parking issues in one area, I want to make sure that we equally on the city side are being able to enforce those in areas that wouldn't have that same agreement. So to me, you know, we've had this separation issue for years, north versus south, and who gets what services. And I wouldn't want one part of the community to get served in a better, distinctly better fashion than another part of the community. So that would be part of that discussion when the attorney and the city manager vet out some options to be able to deal with the situation. But we do want to do our best to come up with a plan to make sure that residents in our community can park in front of their homes.
Can I just say one more quick thing?
Sure.
And I have, I have no tie to this company, but the company that, that Dunes Park is, or Riverdale Dunes District has been using its ParkIt right. I had never heard of them before until maybe two years ago, and they just, and I tell you, if the options today were just towing cars is like the ultimate enforcement to, to parking violations, none of the boards that we work with would ever be interested in it. They just don't want to deal with the liability and the problems of backlash from homeowners. But this, this boot system that this company has, it's very unique. They patented it, and it's been, it's kind of like this boot and release where you get a boot on your car and you call, and, you know, nobody's happy to get a boot on their car, but you call and they give you a code, and you unlock your boot, and you're on your way, and you pay the fee. And it's, it's a pretty unique system. And in my opinion, it's a little bit like, I know everybody tries to have Neighborhood Watch. Everybody wants to organize a Neighborhood Watch, but I think, in my opinion, the, what is it, the Ring, the doorbell, has the video camera on it, goes to your phone. I think a lot of the concerns some homeowners have, you know, that they want to solve through Neighborhood Watch, I think there's other technologies out there now. They're solving some of those problems. And I'm not saying the Ring or doorbell solves, addresses, this may be the same way Neighborhood Watches, but I think it gets, in my opinion, gets pretty close. And this boot system and this, this process that this company has, it's, it's pretty unique. I know that they use it, they have a pretty big contract with Denver, County of Denver. And so, so anyways, it's just, it's a new, it's a kind of a new idea that's kind of come out there, and it's, it's definitely worth taking a look at.
Well, and I want to make sure, again, services are spread across the community for all residents equitably. And so that will be a huge part of the discussion. So we appreciate you coming in, and look forward to seeing how the information that rolls out of this, how we can better enforce parking.
Sounds good. I appreciate your time.
Absolutely. Mr. Wadiola.
Hey, Charles, are they using it already?
Riverdale Dunes is, and the only reason they're, the main reason they're doing it now is they have, there's a hundred and six new townhomes being built in one corner of the neighborhood.
Right.
And they're all, it's, it's, it's two, they're two-car garages. And their fear was, before they started building those homes, they wanted to, they didn't want the park in a lot of the open spaces to suddenly be jammed full of cars. And so they implemented some no-parking zones, now they enforce those now. And what I really like about that, that they jumped on that ahead of time, is we get a lot of calls from potential new homebuyers for those townhomes, where the call is, you know, I have four cars, can I park, you know, can you give me some kind of exception? Can I park on their side of the street? And every time the board's saying no, you know, we, we want, they don't want the, the, all the remaining curb space be filled up. It's a very small place, and so I guess what I like is those homeowners are buying those new townhomes now, or they have two car, one or two cars. They're not buying a townhome with four cars, and then they're going to be told six months later that you suddenly have to figure out what to do with your two extra cars.
So, so where does that feed going? I mean, if they're, if they're doing that, I mean, basically, do we have to approve that or not?
Well, right now, Mr. Wadiola, right now, my understanding is the city has control of enforcement within the public right-of-way, so I don't think anybody can enforce in the public right-of-way. Now, they could enforce and boot cars in their parking facility for their clubhouse and stuff like that.
Okay.
Because it's on private property. But on the public right-of-way, it has to be in line with our parking ordinances and how we do enforcement. And that's what we're trying to get to, is there a better way to do it?
Okay.
Mr. McBroom, did you have any alternative answer?
Thank you, Charles.
Yep.
One of the questions we're trying to answer is, can we authorize this entity to boot vehicles on the public street? That's one of the key issues that we're trying to sort out from a legal standpoint. That's why it's best not to try to legislate it here.
Right. But currently, they can't.
Premiture.
Right? Currently, on our public right-of-way, they cannot boot cars? City Attorney?
The city hasn't taken a position on that publicly at this point. I think that's part of an evaluation that's ongoing.
Okay.
And how private entities interact with private citizens is something that their council should determine for them potentially. And Mr. Wolfersberger and I have spoken about that in the past. So we're continuing to evaluate that.
We're going to be looking for some clear identified parameters when we see you in the future.
Yes.
For discussion on this item.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolfensberger.
Thank you again for your time.
Thank you. Guillermo Serna. Haven't seen you for a while. Welcome back. And good evening.
Good evening. Kind of like health problems as you get up in age. Guillermo Serna, 14122, East 102nd Place, Commerce City, Colorado. I've been gone, but I've been keeping up on TV and perspective. This letter of recommendation for the underprivileged, I think, is something that has been long in coming, and I'm hoping that every one of you support that. Every help that we can give this community is worthwhile. And to me, a lot of the grants that you gave today, like the Kids First, what you gave helps the people inside send these kids back to school when they visit them. And how much is it worth for these kids to stay in school? When they're told, okay, I've examined you, this is your problem, go back to school. And then they sent and make sure that they're there. And this is just in this district. But it does help all these families in one way or form or another, in directions of their health, where sometimes they need it ASAP. In listening to this conversation here, twelve years ago, we went through this, as far as, you know, even city councilmen got into it. Now, it, our kids have grown. These parents that had, you know, let's say junior kids in school, those kids now have cars. And we don't plan for that sometimes. And there's also some seniors up there and some children that need special care during the day. But sometimes, the owners of those homes overdo it. I can give my space to a nurse that comes every day to make sure that that child is okay. But when they take advantage and keep, after they're gone, they park another car right in front of it. And to me, that, that kind of hinders, okay? And it's not just in reunion or anywhere else. It's, it's everywhere. Kids have grown, and we have a problem, and we should get it straightened out. But the homeownerships, as far as HOAs, also have had rules and regulations. When I bought the house up north, it had how many cars you can have in your garage, in the driveway, and one in front of your house. But they're not being enforced. The HOAs are not enforcing them. And I can see why some of the parents and owners want that, because children can be very forceful sometimes, and seniors can be sometimes approached, you know, and hurt, because kids don't have any common sense of saying I'm wrong. And sometimes parents are scared. But I just want to support that letter, most importantly, so that we can somehow get going in some of these needs. And I know I've been away for a while, so I'll be missing some and attending others. But thank you so much for the community.
Good to have you back, Guillermo.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. I always ask, is there anyone in the audience who did not get a chance to sign up for Citizen Communication that intends to sign up for Citizen Communication? Now is the time to raise your hand and let me know that you would like to speak. If not, we will move forward with the agenda, and I see none. So we're going to move into the next item on the agenda, which is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, and non-controversial. They are presented to council for a single motion and vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item for further discussion and a separate vote. Tonight, there are two items listed under the Consent Agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off of the Consent Agenda for further discussion?
Mayor Ford.
Minutes. You know why? Because I got too much...
Do you have a set of minutes to approve that are not in the script?
Sorry, it's not in, in my script. So if we have minutes, they are on, up here on this agenda. So before we go to the Consent Agenda, we have minutes. I need a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 18th, 2017. Councilwoman Elliott.
Move to approve minutes of the meeting for December 18th, 2017.
Thank you. Councilman Hughesman?
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve those minutes. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, we go to the Consent Agenda. With all the things that I just read, there are two items listed under the Consent Agenda. Does anyone on council wish to remove an item off of the Consent Agenda for further discussion? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Mr. Hughesman?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Teeter?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Would the city attorney please read the title?
Resolution 2018-16, resolution authorizing execution of intergovernmental agreement by and between the City of Commerce City and the Colorado Department of Transportation. Resolution 2018-23, resolution approving Fifth Amendment to Professional Services Agreement for Engineering Services with Core Consultants, Inc. for the Tower Road Widening Project.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Title's been read. I'll ask for a roll call Further record, Consent Agenda has been approved unanimously by the councils this evening. Now, we'll move to administrative council business. We do have one item under the administrative council business, which is a letter of support for Community Choice Credit Union Federal Grant Application. Mr. McBroom, you want to speak on the grant and letter of support?
I do think the request is fairly self-explanatory. It seems like a worthwhile grant program. We're not necessarily endorsing Community Choice Credit Union other, over other credit unions. But Community Choice Credit Union did ask for the city's support, so we've drafted a letter for your consideration to authorize the mayor's signature.
Thank you. I'm open for a motion to allow for, for the signature on the letter of support by me for the credit union. Mr. Teeter?
I'd like to make the motion to accept the letter from Community Choice as presented.
Thank you. Mr. Madare?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to allow for my signature to go on the letter of support for the credit union. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Now, I'll ask if there's any other, I do believe that the attorney, Robert Seasley, has an item to bring up under administrative council business.
Yes, Mayor Ford. Back in December, the city council authorized a tolling agreement between the city and other Adams County communities in Denver to permit the negotiated student of some issues relating to the airport and the 1988 IGA. Those negotiations are continuing, and we're presented with another sixty-day extension of that agreement to allow that to continue. So I wanted to advise council that I would be signing that on behalf of the city unless there was an objection from council, so that, just so you're informed that I'm going to be executing that.
Okay. Does anybody have any problems with the attorney signing that?
I have sufficient direction to move forward with that.
That's all I needed to know. Thank you. Is there any other administrative council business? Mr. Douglas?
Yes, thank you. Last year in December, I think it was November or December, I had asked a study session about construction of residential homes, as far as aesthetics and, and, and we're going to bring that up, I think it was as early as late, maybe early April or so. Is that on the calendar?
I'm not sure if we have that scheduled just yet. Our focus was the reunion plan unit development. Was your interest aesthetic requirements in other neighborhoods, or is it primarily reunion?
About the city, this will be for citywide, also related to the dog track that's going to be built.
So the, the interest is residential design standards per the Land Development Code or in the various PUDs within the city? Because they're, they are different.
Right.
We can certainly provide information about what's previously been approved on the Mile High Greyhound Park. But again, because neighborhoods differ.
Right.
Can you be a little bit more specific what your...
It would be across the board for the PUDs, and then also bringing up the service plans for the metro district. I know Ms. Hughes has brought that up before, right? Did you bring that up last time? Two weeks ago? Yeah, we could rope that in with this service plan with the metro districts as well.
I do know that some work is already occurring to bring the metro district item forward. The residential design standards item, if the desire is to present more background on the PUDs across primarily the northern range, that'll take us a little bit of extra time. Let me ask staff, how long would it take us to do that? There are quite a few planning new developments in the northern part of the city, and each will have slightly different residential design standards. I could see where that would be beneficial information for city council, though, because it's not necessarily what's provided in the Land Development Code. Each neighborhood will have slightly different standards.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Any other additional, yours is on here. Mr. Hughesman, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, School District 27J has decided to move forward with their plan for a four-day school week. This is going to have a significant impact on a lot of members in our community. So I'd like to move that the council directs staff to investigate and evaluate opportunities for providing childcare support for Commerce City families affected by the reduction of the school week in School District 27J. I feel we have a new community center up north that is costing tons of millions of dollars, and it would be in our best interest to put that to the good use of the families that are going to be affected by this decision by the school district. Although I personally don't agree with their, their decision, I do support the fact that they are trying to think outside the box, and they're trying to do what they feel is best for the education of our kids. And so moving forward, I think we as a council and as a community need to do the same and figure out what we can do to best serve our kids as well.
All right. I have a motion, Mr. Hughesman, to identify areas of help for residents in our northern community because of the four-day school day, for additional support for childcare services, and any, any of the nonprofits or any organizations may be of help with that, and whether there's opportunities for the city to help in a, in a fashion themselves. Is there a second? Mr. Diaz?
So you're proposing that we do a study session to look at the resources, right? What we might be able to offer? I just want to double check before I second.
Be it a study session, or be it the staff look at the feasibility of providing daycare on Mondays at the new community center. I do know the school district is offering, they will do daycare up there. At some locations, those haven't been determined yet, for a cost of about thirty dollars per day for each student that is going to be out there. I think that maybe if we had the opportunity to do it a little bit cheaper... I think that maybe if we had the opportunity to do it a little bit cheaper and lessen the burden on our families that are going to be affected by this decision, that would be worth our while to do so.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Hughesman. Yeah, I'll second that.
I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? I would like to state, I feel the same way. I want to see what staff can dig up and how we can, what we're looking at as far as what we can and can't do. And I'd like that to be in the form of study session item. So I'm willing to support it and vote for it as long as we go through a study session process. Is there any other discussion? All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. You're welcome. Is there any other administrative council business coming before the city council this evening? Seeing none, we'll go into reports. City Manager?
We did have a very short city manager update that we sent out earlier this afternoon. Please reach out if you have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Sheasley?
I have nothing additional this evening, Mayor Ford.
All right. I'll start off by saying that we, after our last council meeting, we did all, the entire city council, I want to thank the residents for allowing us to go represent them in Washington, DC. We met with all of our federal delegation and then some, talked about the needs within our community. You're more than welcome to go to our website and see our legislative packet that we did take and carry to the Hill and lobby for. There were two members of the council. I want to extend a thank you to the residents for allowing them to stay in Washington for the National League of Cities Conference. And I'm sure that they can highlight some of the things that they were able to take in over that conference period. When we returned from NLC, I did attend the airport coordinating meeting as well. Mr. Teeter? Then I had an ACC meeting, an ACC pre-meeting, an ACC meeting, and Rotary. Then I met with Ryan Seestrom from Coga. I also had a meeting with Suncor, talking about their shutdown and improvements to their plant. And then, let's see, we had the, I attended yesterday, or no, Friday, the Strategic Planning Committee for NADA. And then I think that takes us up to date. I did have another ACC meeting today with the city of Denver, and we'll have more to report after the next council meeting. First, I would like to offer to anyone on council to add to my report, and if there is no one that wants to add to the report, then I would give an opportunity for Councilmember Douglas and/or Diaz to address the public on their being allowed to attend the NLC conference. Mr. Douglas?
Yes, I'd like to thank the citizens for allowing me to stay out in Washington and for the NLC conference that preceded our advocacy trip. On the Saturday and Sunday, Saturday was classes in stability with around discourse, especially with the community around media. On Sunday, I belong to information, I'm sorry, infrastructure, transportation for NLC. Very interesting as far as the money that's being allocated for transportation, not as much as we thought they were going to have for all the towns and cities, especially for the needs of our broken infrastructure. Talked a lot about drones. We have a lot of registered drone owners here in Colorado and throughout the United States, being that Amazon and a lot of other distribution centers want to start doing drone delivery. That's going to be an issue here within Colorado. And then Monday through Tuesday, well, Wednesday was different classes around city government. Wednesday was breakfast with Cory Gardner, Senator Cory Gardner, and Michael Bennett, along with other state and city folks as well, from as far as Montrose, Longmont. Senator Gardner and Bennett spoke highly of Commerce City in that breakfast, and that was sponsored by Patton Boggs. So that was about it.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, sure, I'll add on to it. And again, thank you for the residents for allowing us to spend a little bit more time there. One of the reasons why I did stay a little bit longer was I also serve on National League of Cities Federal Advocacy Committee on Community and Economic Development. This is my second year serving on this community in economic development, so really, the purpose for our meeting, what are we, on Monday, so last week? The meeting, the purpose for that was to recap what we did, as well as highlighting some of the priorities that we do have upcoming. So last year, just to kind of recap, we did advocate for local economic development and entrepreneurship. We encouraged the U.S. Small Business Administration to support and expand small business development centers, as well as urging HUD to enact safeguards against abused and abuses in contracts for deeds, among other things. And so this year, some of the priorities that we are taking a look at, as we have future meetings throughout the year, we expect it to kind of center more along the lines of affordable housing, workforce housing, which I know we've kind of talked about, how some of us don't really like that term, impact fees, as well as funding for infrastructures that can help spur economic developments. I think there are a lot of communities throughout the country who are facing similar issues from us, which is why we are targeting these specific items as things that we want to work on this year. So also attended some classes. I know there were some resources that I already kind of passed over to City Manager McBroom, particularly with regards to Smart City, which I know Councilman Douglas was at, too. I don't know if you guys know this, but we've been waiting for RTD for a year or two now, or four, or five, or six. So there were some options, there were some great presentations. Was it a city, which city was that one? Was it in Minnesota?
Texas.
Texas. That's right, it was in Texas. There was a city in Fort Worth, Texas, that has their, that came up with their own transit plan that I kind of passed on to City Manager McBroom, which might be good for us to look at as options for maybe something we want to incorporate into the city as a way to move our residents around and have those particular services without being so reliant on RTD that we've been waiting for, for a couple of years now. So that's the general idea, so thank you.
Thank you. All right. If there be no further business, to come before the city council of Commerce City this evening, we are adjourned. Thank you all for being here.
I don't know, Renee? I think you beat Renee. I think you beat Renee.